Evening. The November seventeenth Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of the City of Longview is now called to order. Tonight's meeting is being conducted by a teleconference to abide by county, state, and federal recommendations to limit in-person gatherings to help slow the spread of the coronavirus. We thank you for your understanding. Due to the format of this meeting, we will begin tonight with a roll call to confirm all members of the commission are present and able to participate in our consideration. Commissioners, when I call your name, will you please respond in the affirmative if you are present? Nancy Murray?
Present.
Thank you. Tracy Vincent?
Present.
Thank you. Tim Carpenter?
Here.
Thank you. Brent Stevenson? Brent Stevenson? No reply. Pat Noon?
Here.
Thank you. Cody Sage?
Here.
Thank you. Ryan Baumgartner?
Here.
Thank you. Jason Jones?
Present.
Thank you. And myself, Frankie Parsons, I am present. Also, we will do a roll call of city staff. First, we have the city planner, Angela Joy.
Here.
Thank you. Development Director of Services, Michael Shirley.
Present.
Thank you. Planner, Brian McBride?
Present.
Thank you. City Engineer, Austin Bradley?
Present.
Thank you. Utility Maintenance and Technology Manager for the city, Chris Snapp?
Present.
Thank you. All are present, with the exception of Brent Stevenson. Brent, are you on yet? Still no reply. Thank you. Item three is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting in October. Has everyone had a chance to look at them, and if so, are there any corrections? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion. When making a motion, please state your name or the staff for the note.
Tracy Vincent. I make a motion, we approve minutes as read.
Thank you. A motion has been made. Is there a second?
Pat Noon, second.
Thank you, Mr. Noon, second. There's a first and a second. We will now conduct a roll call vote. When asked, please indicate your vote by saying yes or no. Nancy Murray?
Yes.
Thank you. Tracy Vincent?
Yes.
Tim Carpenter? Tim Carpenter? I'll circle back to him. Yes, thank you. Brent Stevenson? Still no answer?
Yes.
Oh, Brent, are you on? Excuse me. Brent, did you reply?
I don't see that Brent is online.
Thank you. Pat Noon?
Yes.
Cody Sage?
Yes.
Ryan Baumgartner?
Yeah.
Jason Jones?
Yes.
And I'm Frankie Parsons. I do approve. Staff, will you now confirm the record of the vote?
Thank you. The motion was approved by Tracy Vincent, seconded by Pat Noon. Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. We are now reaching Citizen Comment portion of our meeting. Those wishing to participate, Citizen Comment tonight, were invited to access this meeting through a link to the register with the teleconferencing application. This portion of Citizen Comment are comments made other than the public hearing items that we will have on the agenda tonight. If you wish to speak on an item that is on the agenda, please wait until that time to speak. Scott Shellhorse is coordinating the technical side of the meeting and will assist with moderating the Citizen Comment portion of our meeting. When you're called to speak, you will be unmuted and given one opportunity to speak. Please begin by stating your name and address for the public record. If you're also watching a live stream meeting through City View Municipal Television, please mute the voice feedback back. Scott, do we have any residents who want to speak tonight?
We do have several people that are logged into the call, but I believe all are here to speak during the public hearings, the specific items that will come later.
Thank you, Scott. We're now on the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are Platts that meet the requirements of the City of Longview subdivision ordinance. These items will be approved with one vote unless any member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, any member of the public, or the applicant would like an item removed from consent and placed on the regular agenda for discussion. Would anyone like an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda for discussion tonight?
Tim Carpenter, move for approval.
I will now ask for a motion. And Tim Carpenter, did you say you made the motion?
Yes, ma'am. Move for approval.
Thank you. And our second?
Tracy Vincent, my second.
Thank you. There's a first and a second. We will now conduct a roll call vote. Nancy Murray?
I approve.
Thank you. Tracy Vincent?
Approve.
Tim Carpenter?
Approve.
Still no reply from Brent Stevenson. Pat Noon? Pat Noon?
Approve.
Thank you. Cody Sage?
Approve.
Ryan Baumgartner?
Approve.
Jason Jones?
Approve.
And I'm Frankie Parsons, and I approve the minutes as well. Staff, will you now confirm the record of the vote?
Thank you. The motion was made by Tim Carpenter, seconded by Tracy Vincent. The motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Now we're on to the regular agenda. The purpose of this meeting is to hear all pertinent testimony of those who support of and in opposition to the applications before the commission. Tonight is the first of two public hearings required to approve a change in the commission. The commission also considers Platts. The procedure for public hearing items to be followed tonight will be, the public hearing will be opened and testimony will be heard in the following order. First, from the staff, second, from the applicant, and then third, from the general public, and that includes those that are in support and in opposition to the request. If you're part of a large group with a common interest, we ask that you appoint a spokesperson rather than have each individual restate the same information. When addressing the commission, please begin by stating your name and address. Try to limit your comments to five. When all sides have spoken, the public's room on the matter will be closed and no further public discussion will be entertained. After each public hearing is closed, the commission will vote on the request. Zoning requests and the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation will go forward to the second public hearing, which will be conducted by the city council on December tenth. Now we're on to Agenda, regular agenda item A, and Angela will summarize it for us. Angela?
Thank you. This is a public hearing. We hope to consider application Z twenty dash eleven filed by Boxwood Group LLC requesting a rezone from office to single-family four zoning district for lots eight through twenty-two and a common area park of Lost Creek Business Park, Unit Three, located on the east side of Technology Center. The property in question was rezoned in two thousand and six from single-family four and agricultural to office zoning district for an office park. Currently, there are offices located along the entrance of this subdivision, and the rest of the property is vacant. The current zoning ordinance does allow single-family homes in office zoning. However, it is also, it also allows for non-residential uses such as office, multifamily, and anything in lower zoning designations, lower zoning categories. In order to protect the integrity of the neighborhood, the best course of action would be to rezon to single families so that offices could not be built within this section of the neighborhood. Technology Center, Lost Creek Circle, and Roberts Circle are classified as local roadways and are maintained by the city. Residential uses are appropriate along these roadways. Staff finds a proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses. Staff does recommend approval of this request. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions for Angela? Hearing none. Thank you, Angela. Does the applicant have anything to add, or would you like to speak? This is for the applicant. Hearing none. I'm sorry, go ahead.
This is Jim Scott with Boxwood Group. I'm available if you have any questions.
Anyone have any questions of Mr. Scott at this time?
It's Tracy Vincent. I've got a question. In fact, will there be sidewalks that have to be entered in with the residential side, being that that's kind of a blind turn down through there?
Mr. Vincent, we are in the process of working through those deed restrictions, waiting on this approval first, and then we'll continue working through those deed restrictions, and that will be a consideration.
Thank you.
Are there sidewalks on the west side of Technology?
At this time, there are no sidewalks on Technology.
Any other questions of the applicant? Does the commission have any additional questions for staff or the applicant?
What about the piece of property north of the, on Technology that's still designated office? Why is that?
They do not own that piece of property.
Do what?
They do not own that piece of property that is owned by separate, separate owner, separate property owner. The Roberts do not own that property.
So that property will stay office?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
So Angela, would it be case where they would have the opportunity of being able to have business on the north side as well as the southeast side?
Yes, that is a possibility.
And this, Angela, this does line up with the new UDC?
Yes, actually rezoning it to single-family would line up with the UDC, where the UDC, actually, the UDC would require a specific use permit for residential in-office. They're, they're doing a rezone. But yes, it would comply.
And the SF four designation is within what we need out that way?
That is correct. And they're not planning to further subdivide these lots. These lots will remain the same. The layout you see here is the layout they're, they're gonna use.
The people who own that property to the north could do theoretically the same thing? On Technology Center?
Yeah, yes.
They could come and fly for a rezon if they wanted residential?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any additional questions for staff or the applicant? I'm giving you plenty of time. Hearing none, I will now open the public hearing. Are there any in support of this request? If so, please state your name and address for the staff. Anyone that would like to speak?
I don't see anyone who is raising their hand within the teleconferencing tool or anyone here that's not, not here to speak on another specific item.
Thank you, Scott. Is there anyone that wants to speak in opposition to the request? Is that the same situation, Scott?
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments from anyone? Before we close the public hearing? Hearing none? We will close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion. And when making a motion, please state your name for the staff.
This is Nancy. This is Nancy Murray. I move that we approve Z two O dash one-one.
Thank you, Nancy. Is there a second?
This is Jason Jones. I've seconded it.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. We will now conduct a vote, and you can reply with yes or no. Nancy Murray?
Yes.
Thank you. Tracy Vincent?
Yes.
Thank you. Tim Carpenter?
Yes.
Thank you. Brent Stevenson? Still no response? Pat Noon?
Yes.
Thank you. Cody Sage?
Yes.
Thank you. Ryan Baumgartner?
Yeah.
Thank you. Jones?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm Frankie Parsons. I say yes. Staff, will you now confirm the record of the vote?
Yes. The motion was made to approve the request by Nancy Murray and seconded by Jason Jones. The motion was, passes eight to zero.
Thank you. We're now on to Agenda item B, and Angela will introduce it.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. We hope to consider application S twenty dash O one filed by Verizon Wireless requesting a specific use permit for a radio and television or microwave tower, cell tower in Neighborhood Services zoning district located at three thousand and eight Gilmer Road. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit for a telecommunications tower in Neighborhood Services zoning district. The applicant is leasing an area from the current property owner that is approximately forty foot wide by forty foot deep. The area will be fenced in with an access gate. The tower and equipment will remain within the boundaries of that fenced-in area. The setback from the leased area to the nearest property line to the north is approximately nineteen point two one feet. It will also have a setback of approximately a hundred and sixty feet to the property line to the east, where the direct adjacent residential properties are located. The tower will be two hundred and fifteen feet tall, which includes a ten-foot-tall lightning rod. The City of Longview has a water tower north, located north of the property, directly adjacent. Chapter ninety-five Telecommunications and Cable Television Regulations, Section ninety-five dash twenty-three states that no building or other structure or portions thereof shall be erected or maintained by any property owner, leasing, licensee, or contractor, or utility, or governmental agency, not otherwise exempted by law, which creates interference or obstruction to the City of Longview's law enforcement, public safety, general government, or emergency microwave television towers and emergency radio broadcast corridor. These radio facility communicate, these radio facilities communicate with water, sewer, traffic facilities throughout the city. The city has plans on expanding the radio corridor. The applicant has not addressed the impacts to this future broadcast capability. However, after further discussion with the City of Longview and the applicant, the City of Longview requests the following conditions to the SUP approval for the proposed Verizon Wireless cell tower at three thousand and eight Gilmer Road. The condition would be that if it is determined by the city engineer in the future that the applicant Verizon Wireless cell tower caused communications interference between the city's proposed or existing communication equipment, then Verizon Wireless will make available space on their proposed cell tower for the placement of antennas at the range specifically between a hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty feet or any other height as agreed to in writing. This antenna space on the tower will be provided at no rent cost to the city, while Verizon Wireless shall bear no cost whatsoever for the city's installation of the antennas on the tower or to make the tower more than the antennas. Co-location of the city's facilities will require co-location application to the tower owner for an addition, for and structural engineering evaluation of the cell tower. Structural upgrades to the tower are the responsibility of the tower owner. Staff does make a recommendation to approve with this stipulation listed in this staff report. As of yesterday, staff did receive a petition with twenty-two point seven two percent of the notified property owners in opposition to this request. The local government code states that an affirmative vote of at least three-fourths of all members of the governing body, which is city council, is required to approve the zoning request that receives at least twenty percent of the area or the lot or lane immediately adjoining the area covered by the proposed zoning change and extending two hundred feet from that area. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions. Hello? I hear you. Can you hear me? Okay. Okay. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Angela, this is Nancy. On page thirty-one of our packet, it says that staff recommends denial of this request. Did you just state that?
We sent an updated staff report, I believe on Monday, and so we adjusted it with the condition. And so, yes, we did send an updated staff report, and then today, we sent a petition map to y'all, which y'all can see in the slideshow. If y'all click to the, if our media, media division will click to the next slide, you can see the petition map.
So just to be clear, you are now recommending approval?
With a stipulation.
All right.
Yes, ma'am.
Angela, this is Sean Hara. We lost your audio for the last little bit of what you were saying during your initial statement. It was the part where you were talking about the letters that you had received and the twenty-two percent. So you might restate that now that we have your audio again.
Yes, I will gladly restate that. So yesterday, staff did receive a petition with twenty-two point seven two percent of the notified properties within opposition to this request. So the local government code states that an affirmative vote of at least three-fourths of all members of the governing body, which is city council, is required to approve this zoning request. Because we received over twenty percent of the area that was notified, we received a petition, and we received it for twenty-two point seven two. So at city council, it will require. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time. Media, can you, can you go to the next slide to show the petition map, please? Thank you.
Hey, Angela, Jason, I've got a quick question. So the reluctance in the beginning, or the, the, the denial in the beginning, rather, was due to the possibility of interference with emergency per vehicle or police and whatnot?
Yes, so, well, it was for critical infrastructure. So we have a water tower to the north, and we have antennas on that water tower. So there was some concern that there would be interference with this new tower. Yes, that's correct.
So the new provisions are what take care of that concern?
Yes, and Public Works, our city engineer, as well as Chris Snapp, they're both online. So, you know, feel free to jump in if I'm not correct.
Thank you.
I believe that condition did, was sufficient for them.
Angela, did the city look from the standpoint of being able to add the communications to the water tower?
I'm sorry, I don't.
Being able, instead of wrecking a tower, can they put it down on the legs of the water tower?
Um, Alton, I believe you can answer that. I don't think that they would want communications on their, on the city tower.
Let me, let me address this. This is Chris Snapp, Utility Maintenance and Technology Manager for the City of Longview. I manage all the SCADA and the network for the entire city, and we use the top of the tower, which is the highest point of the tower, on all our water towers as a means of communication. Our data, as far as water tower information, as far as transferring information. I am not the only user of that water tower. Traffic is also on there. We have the potential for police to be on there. So there's means, the tops of the tower that are really good to use. The legs of the tower just put it too low. That tower is specifically a hundred and thirty feet, so we would need to be much higher. The issue that we have with an agreement that we proposed with Verizon is if the event that our line of sight is impacted by the Tower of Verizon, then we have the means to use their tower to litigate that issue. That's what we're proposing, and what's what we agreed to. Thank you.
Excellent question, and good responses. Are there any additional questions for the staff at this time? If not, I'm going to move on to the applicant. Does the applicant have anything to add, or would you like to speak to this request? This is for the applicant.
Yes, so I'm going to go ahead and unmute, so it's, I believe. Angela, the applicant, is it Brian Elrod and Louis Martin? Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and unmute them now. Louis Martin is who I see available on the call. Louis, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for letting me have an opportunity to speak. Yes, everything we've heard is true and correct so far. I did want to add that the tower being placed there, I actually did the site acquisition, you know, for Verizon Wireless and looking in the area. Just in case it comes up, you know, we did look for existing towers, and, you know, Chris spoke earlier, we're looking at the water tower. It was too low to meet Verizon's need. Further north, there's about a little over half a mile away, there is a tower that, you know, people may say, can you use that tower? The ground elevation is roughly four hundred and seven feet, and the tower, the height available, it's only a hundred and forty-foot tower, okay? The height available to Verizon growing is a hundred and thirty feet. When you add four hundred and seven and a hundred and thirty, that gives you a, you know, an AMSL. And Chris, you know, I'm talking about an AMSL of five thirty-seven. At this new location here, the ground elevation is four thirty-eight plus a two-hundred-foot tower, which is where antennas would going, four thirty-eight plus two hundred feet is six thirty-eight. So six hundred and thirty-eight at this location versus five thirty-seven. It's a hundred and one feet taller, and Verizon engineer said that is a substantial difference. That's why that tower cannot be used down the road. If it would, I can assure you Verizon, it would be much, much, much more efficient of their resources and much cheaper, obviously, to just place antennas on an existing tower than having to erect the new one. So that's why we're here today. And then working with Alton and Chris, you know, that's why we gave the provision that if any time in the future there was a situation where any type of interference or anything that happened like that, we would let them go on the tower. So we addressed that as well. So we're trying to be, we're trying to rectify any type of problems that would happen in the future as well. So we've taken care of those issues. Any other questions that the commission, or may I be willing to answer?
Are those towers retrofitable?
Are those towers what? I'm sorry?
Ret- retrofitable?
I'm not sure what that means.
Well, let's say that Chris and Alton come back and say, we got to hang something here, and your tower's not designed to hang that. How do you modify the tower to hang there to weight?
Oh, oh, the tower, it's, it's designed to hold multiple antennas. And as we explained to Alton, there's mounts, and for every antenna that's sold, there's a mount that goes with it. And so you just got to buy the appropriate mount that would.
Okay.
Tower. So absolutely, you can put mounts to go with the antennas. So pretty much whatever antenna they want, whether it's a small wave or a small omnidirectional antenna or directional antenna, you just need that associated mount that would need, you'd bracket that onto the tower and then apply your antenna to the mount.
Right, so you could not overload the tower?
There would come a point, there would be a point to where... There would be a point to where the tower would be overloaded. But, you know, with Verizon's equipment going on there and the city going next, we obviously don't, we don't see that. It would have to be three carriers on there and get loaded to the max. And then we just don't see that.
Okay. And that tower will exceed the water tower by 70 feet?
If the water tower is 30, yes, sir. That is correct. And again, we need that height to shoot over the water tower because if not, we need to see above the trees and we need to see above the water tower. Because we're not seeing over that, then all we're doing is broadcasting these power antennas. We're just shooting through the water, bouncing back off. And it just sort of like, with the advent of, you know, 5G and everything that's coming out, that's why we're trying to get this tower in place so that we can be in place and position ourselves ready for this, so.
So that is part of the 5G push?
Absolutely. If you don't have the towers in place for it, you won't get the 5G. Absolutely, that is correct.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
There wasn't a place that was further... This is Tracy Vincent. Is there a place like further to the west of this where there's more commercial or north where there's more commercial instead of putting it right into the middle of a residential area?
We try to put it, I mean, I looked and to sync up with everything else. And I'm looking at a map and, you know, it's, every, it is a lot of residential in the area. I will grant you that. But the Neighborhood Services, it's the only thing zoned that would allow for it. And there's a water tower just right there that's already a tall structure that's there. And so we, there's a, based upon Verizon's adjacent sites, this is the only location that we can find that will sync up with the other towers. For us to go further west, we've already got a site. We have redundancy. We don't need something further west going out, you know, a mile that way because we got the coverage out there. We're trying to provide coverage to the residents inside, inside the corridor there. So West Hawkins Parkway. And we're trying to cover inside, you know, through, along, obviously, my road. And this is not me saying this, this is the Verizon Wireless engineer saying this. And this has been a project going on for two years now. All of 2019 and pretty much most of this year. And this application was filed earlier this year in March. And we've been working with Public Works since then just to address this frequency issue because, you know, that's how serious, you know, we take this project. We wanted to resolve. We didn't just abandon it and try to go somewhere else because it'd be easier. This is the spot that we had to pick. So we wanted to work out this frequency issue and make sure we didn't have any interference. So that's why we offered up this condition for the S U P. We offered up free space to the city that if there ever was an issue, so. And we're down to our last option here.
All right, thank you. We appreciate the applicant being so responsive. Does the commission have any questions, remaining questions for staff or the applicant before we go to the public hearing? Hearing none, I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak in support of this request? If so, please state your name and address for the staff. Anyone in support, would you speak at this time?
There is no one online right now to offer support.
Thank you. Now, is there anyone with a public that is in opposition to the request? This is your opportunity to speak. So please state your name and address.
We do have two people that are logged on to be able to speak regarding the item. One is Esther Jones. But we don't see that she has a microphone plugged in or a way to be able to speak. She has sent us a message and we can relay that now. And hopefully, maybe she can get the microphone on after this next one. But we'll just say that she sent us a message saying that she is here in opposition and said that she would vote no on the item. If she is able to turn her microphone back on or enable that, we'll come back to her. We also have a Spencer Smith. So Spencer will come to you now.
Thank you.
Perfect. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect. Good evening. My name is Spencer Smith. I'm a resident at 103 Woodway Lane here in Longview. My home is located directly behind the proposed site where Verizon Wireless has filed for a specific use permit to build a cellular tower. This potential project has raised concerns with neighbors and myself due to the size and nature of the structure and its proximity to an established residential neighborhood. Most concerning is the negative impact it will have on property values. I've consulted with Suzanne Smith, the broker and owner of Remax First Choice here in Longview, and we've discussed the hurdles that homes near structures such as these are subjected to. Perspective buyers will see the tower as an eyesore and even possibly dangerous to live near. As a result, you have homes which are difficult to sell and must be marketed at a reduced price to be appealing to prospects. I purchased my residence two years ago at the age of 23 and after graduating from Texas A&amp;M, and it poured my heart and soul into my home. I've also worked extremely hard to improve and maintain my most valuable asset. As a result, I would urge this board to recommend against approving application number S20-1. It is imperative that we protect our community by not allowing a private company to benefit at the expense of our neighborhood. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Spencer Smith, excuse me.
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the staff? Or rather, the commissioners from this gentleman? All right, hearing none. We will close the public hearing. And I will entertain a motion on this item. In making a motion, please state your name. Do we have a motion? I will repeat, do we have a motion on this agenda item? It has not passed due to lack of motion to vote. We'll now conduct a roll call vote. Is this accurate, that we will confirm that we have no vote? Or do we just not vote at all?
If there was no motion made, there doesn't need to be a vote.
It failed for a lack of...
It failed for a lack of a motion.
Thank you. Due to lack of motion, that particular agenda item failed and we will move forward to a regular agenda item speak.
Thank you. This is a public hearing will be held to consider application S20-06 filed by Robert Wayne Kling requesting a specific use permit to allow for a restaurant with a private club in general retail zoning districts for Lot 7, Block A, Longview Town Crossing, located at 390 East Munro Road. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow for the onsite consumption of mixed beverages within general retail zoning district to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. The proposed restaurant is located in general retail and there is no adjacent residential. Staff finds the proposed S U P is consistent with the future lane use map and surrounding land use. Staff recommends approval of the rest of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions of staff? Thank you, Angela. Does the applicant have anything to add or would like to speak on this request?
Robert King is on the line. I'm gonna unmute him now. He is available.
Good evening, everybody. No, I'm just available if anybody has any questions about what we're planning to, the restaurant that we're planning to put in and how we're going to utilize the sale of the alcohol.
Thank you, Mr. Kling. Commissioners, do you have any questions of this applicant?
Is that the corner bakery site?
Yes, sir, it is.
And we don't have any T A B C rules as far as it relates to the recruiting center, correct?
That is correct. There are no distance requirements. Only schools and churches and daycares.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Any additional questions of this applicant? Or staff? Hearing none, we will now open the public hearing. Are there any in support of this request that would like to speak at this time? If so, please state your, start with your name and address.
We have no one in the queue that is wanting to speak on this item.
Either in opposition or approval, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments from anyone? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
This is Pat Noon. I make a motion we approve as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Noon. Is there a second?
Tracy Vincent will second.
Thank you, sir. To call for the vote, please indicate by saying yes or no. Nancy Murray?
Yes.
Thank you. Tracy Vincent?
Yes.
Thank you. Tim Carpenter?
Yes.
Thank you. Brent Stevenson? Still no reply? Pat Noon?
Yes.
Thank you. Cody Sage?
Yes.
Thank you. Ryan Baumgartner? Brian? Are you on? No reply this time. Jason Jones?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Ryan, are you with us yet?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, yes.
All right, and you do approve. All right, thank you. I'm Frankie Parsons and I approve. Staff, will you confirm the record of the vote?
Yes, the motion was made by Pat Noon to approve the request as presented. It was seconded by Tracy Vincent and the motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Staff update. Angela?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. All items that were presented to city council was approved and that includes the U D C.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, any further questions of staff? Before we close the meeting? In closing, let's please know that it is possible our next few Planning and Zoning Commission meetings will need to be conducted via teleconference like this one. We thank you for your presence and your attendance and your participation. We are adjourned. Thank you.